Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners of the ByState Development Agency Meeting to order at 8:30 a.m. on April 22nd. Myra, will you please recall the role?
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Vassella. Commissioner Galladay. Commissioner Brown.
I'm sorry. Here from Commissioner Galladay, I had it on mute.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
We have a forum present.
Thank you so much. The first item of business is one that I'm particularly happy about today. We wanted to take a moment for a special recognition, so we're asking our outgoing Board Commissioner, Justin Zimmerman from Illinois, to join us this morning. Thank you, Justin, for joining us. I wanted to also say thank you for attending the meeting in person this morning. We wanted to take this opportunity to say how much we appreciated your contributions to the ByState Board. You joined the board in March of 2017, and for the past five years, you've helped ByState and its diverse enterprises with your better, you've made us better with your constructive input, your great guidance, your support for the ByState Development leadership, and mostly, in particular, its teams and its customers. We're so appreciative of that. You stepped up and you served in various offices, and most recently as Vice Chair, and you were a great help to me, and for that, I'm particularly appreciative. You are active on several board committees. It's evident that you care deeply about the organization and improving the quality of life in our region. We thank you for your service. So on behalf of the board and our fellow board members, Talby Roach and I would like to present you with a special resolution in recognition of all you've done as a Commissioner of the ByState Development Board Agency. I know Talby has a few things that he'd like to say, and hopefully you will also give us a few comments at the end. Thanks so much, Justin.
Thank you, Chair Winmiller. Justin, I'm moving into my fourth year here, and of course, your help, including your criticism and trying to make us better, has been really invaluable. I mean, one of the things in particular is I like to say very proud of our trajectory as far as finance is concerned. You and I had those conversations several times about creating a reasonable financial future for this organization, and that just doesn't happen with one person. It happens not only with staff, but starts with the commissioners and moves down. And so I just want to thank you personally for that. You read all those statements. You went over those thick board packets. I know it's a lot. We ask a lot of our commissioners, and I just want to thank you for that. Not only that, one of the things that we have all been endeavoring to do was also get into fundamental board compliance and moving into, hey, what our contracts say we are going to do. That also was one of the ethics that you moved through this organization. I'd like to say we're better for that. Another kind of fun comment is, you know, you were with me when we made some presentations to some frontline drivers who were making a difference in their community. It's interesting when I'm in the garage, when people, when our operators notice that. And a couple of them were, how about that tall guy, that tall commissioner who gives away awards? That's how they describe you. And I thought affectionately, but realizing at that point that our frontline operators knew that our commissioners had presence in their lives, okay? That you all were there and there for our operators, and Justin, you've been one of those voices. That is an unusual voice. And it's an unusual voice because what I'd like to say to you is that you have done this the right way, the right way with honor and conviction, also with pushing people, pushing people like myself. As you know, I value critique and criticism. It makes us better. I'll continue to do that. And Justin, I just want to thank you very deeply as President and CEO of this organization. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other comments?
Yeah, if I could jump in, and Talby, you actually said it really well, and he did it with honor. And I just want to say, Justin, I really appreciate you helping me out, right? First, starting out, I mean, I don't know of anybody who spends more time going through the board packages and preparing for the meetings, and I just, you know, to make it simple and quick, thank you, Justin. You really helped me out a lot. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to just say, Justin, I appreciate from day one that I got on the board, you extended the knowledge that you had gained and shared that, and any questions that I had, you were always willing to do that, whether it was offline or wherever. You really helped me get settled in there, and I really appreciate that and will never forget it.
Thank you, Justin, so much for your help, and you're really going to be missed, and I hope the little family of yours are doing well.
Well, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. Very kind words, very, very kind words. Thank you. And I appreciate the recognition because, as you know, I took a lot of pride in my time as a Commissioner. Whether it was, as you said, trying to prepare as best I could for the meetings, whether it was attending outside events, that was some of my favorite times, being at the garage, being at Juneteenth celebrations, supporting our employees who are doing the frontline work. I want to thank you, Talby. Thank all of our upper-level staff. Certainly thank our frontline employees out doing the day-to-day challenging work. Thank you to all of the commissioners I served with. And I want to thank the officials in Madison County who appointed me and had their faith in getting me to this board. That was very, very nice of them. I'll leave you all with this thought. I heard this phrase a few days ago, and I think it somewhat applies to this board. I think the quote was about companies, but to paraphrase, "A good board automatically make a good company or a good organization, but a bad board will generally sink an organization." We've got to have a good board here at ByState, and it starts with active and engaged board members. And that's all I ever tried to do was put in the right time and come to the right, what I thought was the right conclusion or the right approach. If I ever disagree with you on something, I assure you, it was nothing more and nothing less than me just doing what I thought was right for St. Louis and for the organization. If any of you ever need any assistance or think I can help in any way, feel free to reach out. I certainly want what's best for each of you individually and what's best for ByState. So I'll let you get back to your meeting. I appreciate it, and good luck going forward.
Here we go. And here we can show for the camera. Want to make some space for this, but that was not. All right. Again, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Let's get back to it. Okay?
Before you go, Justin, I just would like everyone to give you a round of applause. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Myra, will you read any public comment cards that were received for today's meeting? I'm sorry.
Yes, we only received one public comment. It was from Murray's Manor. His topic was quality control. His comments were, "Beyond multiple issues I've experienced, in this case, what is the customer service policy for failure of service? I have experienced repeated failure of service, non-ification on the app when the trains are late, buses not showing, but being told opposite by information, et cetera. When riders pay and the service is substandard, what is the policy for accountability? I have lost time and money trying to get to and from home during one's ask as a paying rider. I've used social media to address these issues and spoken with Natalie, who directed me here."
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the February 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners' open meeting. The minutes were provided for review by the board. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, a need of motion and a vote to approve?
I still move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a report of the President. I would ask Talby Roach for comments.
Commissioners. So first, we are moving forward, and we are asking for your approval. Do you have FY23 budget today, which moves through on a committee basis? But just to update you on my process associated with that budget, I did have meetings with each of the elected officials on Missouri's side, and the budget did meet with their approval, so we will go through their administrative part. On the Illinois side, I have assigned a team for negotiation headed by Chuck Stewart and Tammy Fulbright with St. Clair County Transit District on their specific contract. It's my understanding that those talks are going well. I'm very excited about that. So we are moving through this budget process as expected, and of course, I'm very proud of the proposed reduction in cost for FY23. Also, as part of the budget process, I am moving forward on the secure platform plan. As you know, there is a significant private sector contribution, and to date, we have secured $10.7 million of project sector funding for this ambitious project to close the system. Our next step, of course, is to move through this FY23 budget proposal because there are some contributions that need to be formally negotiated with each funding partner, and we will now move into that phase. All during that phase, on a parallel basis, however, we will be working on the fundamental design of the secure platform project. So the gating systems, and for instance, the camera systems that also are enhanced with this ambitious program. Also, this morning, I would like to formally announce Kevin Scott as the project manager of this program. One of the really important parts of an ambitious program like this is we need to have a voice and a face behind something like this, a piece of leadership that imparts to the public the changes that we are making to transit in St. Louis. Kevin and Kevin's leadership associated with security upgrades and the great progress he's made over the past two and a half years with our organization, I think deserves this sort of assignment, and I think Kevin is the type of leader to help us bring a very ambitious project like this home. I hope you agree with me. I also want to formally thank, obviously, we had the incident on the 16th of April, and certainly that was devastating and one that should be recognized. But one part of that recommendation should be the great police work by the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department and, of course, our security team. Commissioners, please note that part of a rigorous security program is when things go wrong, do we have a thorough and professional response? As was shown in the recent arrest and successful arrest of the suspect associated with this, this is a rigorous partnership where video and evidence is worked on together in a collaborative way. Kevin's team did an excellent job working through the night with St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department to successfully bring an arrest to bear, and I'm very proud to say that that has happened. Although I'm certainly disappointed in the individual event, what I can say is that the movement of our team and the professionalization of our team and our security plan did work, and it did work in the case of the video was there, and of course, the arrest was made. Also, I would like everyone to know that we have FTA Regional Administrator Mark Tiamet and his staff coming in on May the 2nd and 3rd. We will make several presentations to FTA, including budget presentation. I will be introducing them to new staff, including Chuck Stewart and Tom Curran, who they haven't met face-to-face. We will be touring a few different facility projects, including Union Station Tunnel, and I will make Mark T available to various folks on the 2nd and 3rd as we show them all different aspects of the system. Well, that, oh, also, I did want to note to the Commissioners that I have talked to Chuck Stewart about the public comment from Mr. Manor. As you can see in the performance summary, Metro Performance Summary from July to February of FY22, the employment crisis, although it is abating with our efforts, certainly did affect service. And the reality is that we do need to do a better job with our customers, and we've been working very hard, but the authorization of the hiring incentive has helped in our employment crisis, and of course, the reduction of service on the Missouri side, albeit very slightly in March, has also helped abate some of those issues. So we are seeing some improvement in the numbers, but it is still not good enough. And of course, the customer concerns for this manner is very legitimate, and I will, myself and Mr. Stewart, will reach out to them and follow up with that customer. So that concludes my remarks this morning. Thank you, Commissioners.
Any questions for Talby?
Just have a comment. Talby, I just want to applaud you on your decision on Kevin Scott as that project manager. As Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I have the opportunity and the pleasure of talking with Kevin on numerous occasions on security issues. And when I talk to him, I can hear in his voice and his statement, his commitment to our organization and to getting things done properly, and I think the professionalism that he brings is above and beyond, so I applaud you for that decision.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd like to second that. I think that's a good idea, put Kevin in that, and like you said, we need a face behind what's going on. I guess my biggest question is just timing. I feel that I'm not alone, and I feel like the public is just tired of hearing words saying, "We're going to get better," and "We're doing so much better," but then they see things not getting better. And so my question is, you know, I'm a big proponent of the secure platform plan. When will the public actually see something happening? That's kind of my question. I know it was a year ago that we heard about it, and I love the idea, but how long does it take to actually start seeing something?
Chair, can I address that briefly? So certainly, the first step was raising that private sector money and getting the commitments from the three electeds, and we have done that. It does take some time. I would agree with you in the impatience to move forward. But this is a sea change for how transit works, especially on the metro link system. With 38 stations and with, for instance, fair revenue and a complete change as far as all of our video resources, this will be a huge program, and it will take time. Raising that kind of money was obviously the first step from private sector, and now we move into the next. We already have design funds in place so that now that Kevin is the project manager and, of course, will be accountable and will be accessible to all of you Commissioners to give you an update on their individual project, we can move forward on a design standpoint. It is likely that it will, however, be a phased program because one of the ways to get a program like this put in place is to phase it over different sections of the alignment. For instance, it might make sense to do Illinois separately and then Blue Line separately and Red Line in Missouri, simply to make it, to cut it into smaller pieces that make sense. And also, that has allowed us to solicit more contractors when we've been able to segment programs like this. Also, this will change the fundamental design of every single station, so it is significant. I agree with you in the impatience. But I would also like to point out that in our security program, we post quarterly, online, our fundamental statistics. That was a commitment that we had going on. Yes, the secure program, platform plan is one aspect of our security, but remember, and it is a discernible difference on the alignment to see the private security active, moving, all different uniforms, the TSSs are out. I am out on the system, and it is a discernible difference that Mr. Scott has created in our system. It is more than just SPP. It is how we are operating on a day-to-day basis. And I do invite and very much encourage everyone to talk to Mr. Scott about the progress of his team. I also invite everyone to talk to our police partners. We, our relationship with, for instance, the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Force, the County Police Force, and St. Clair County Sheriffs has never been so rigorous. This is a true partnership where we are working together to make our system safer. I do believe that today it is safer than it was a year ago and safer than it was a year ago prior to that, but we need to continue to work on it every single day. I realize that sometimes the statements that we can get better, that is more of an ethic. It's an ethic about security. We can get better every single day. We should never not look at, looking at things differently. Commissioner Cox, I'd point out, one of those things is SPP. You've pushed us in that regard in looking at what are the practical things we can do to be a more responsive system in security, and we're going to continue to do that. I agree with you that everybody's a little impatient, but we are moving forward on the program, and we will continue to.
Just real quick, is there any estimate then, to my question, is there any estimate on time when the public can actually see anything happening? Like as far as the secure platform plan?
So we will move through design, and I would like to have the physical pieces, so the gating systems and so on, bid essentially 10 to 12 months from now. Then we could put it in action. So from start to finish, somewhere between 18 to 24 months for, to actual put this kind of a program in place, mostly because it includes the very important design aspects of the camera systems and, for instance, an electronic fair media system, which of course is a very important aspect of it. I'm a little impatient with that timing. I would agree with you, but I think practically speaking, implementation is within that kind of a timeframe.
I have a question. Can that process be expedited in any way? Because it is a long time. It appears to be a very long time.
Well, I'm going to hedge a little bit with you, Commissioner, because it just would, I don't know what all are the details and the bid environment within that circumstance. It could be that after we go through some bids and Mr. Scott gets his arms around this project a little better, and we're seeing, for instance, what's the availability associated with some of these gating resources, that it could be accelerated. But I am making a more conservative estimate so that we have a goal that isn't obtainable. And until we get into some of the specific designs, it's very, very difficult to be specific about that timing. So I'm going to, right now, I just, I do think that that's possible, that we could expedite the project. We do not have any monies that we have to, for instance, wait for. None of the $52 million that this is, this project is estimated for are any funds that we have to wait from the federal government from. All of our local contributions are ones that are quickly made available, so we don't have any problems from a funding standpoint. And of course, that's what I've been really working on over the past 10 months, is the financing essentially of a project like this.
And that's what I was just wondering is, because we have the funding in place, and when I asked in January, it sounded like the funding was in place. Now we're going to be moving into May, and it doesn't seem like we've seen any progress. And I'm just speaking for myself. I'm guessing that the board agrees with me that this is, I feel, should be your and our number-one priority above everything else, and figuring out how to get this project moving so the public can see that we are in the process of making changes. We hear them, and we're not just, you know, saying that we're getting better and just actually getting things done. That's all I have.
And Talby, I agree with Commissioner Cox. You know, this has to be our priority, as you and I have talked in the past, and Kevin and I have, and I think, I know you've been working on that funding, and I know what Kevin's been trying to get accomplished, but now with him taking over the project manager, I have all the confidence in the world, Derek, that Kevin is going to keep us informed. I know anything that I get through the Safety Committee, I'm going to pass on to everybody, but he will do the same. So I think we're going to see the grass growing a little bit quicker as we move forward.
Talby, could you please provide the board, you and/or Kevin, with an update at each board meeting, but also at the next board meeting, if you can provide us with a timeline in terms of design, the bid process, and then construction? Because I think those are the three, the three issues or parts of this project that need to be more fully vetted with the board. I would, I'm interested to see what the design phase is like versus, the bid phase versus construction, and I think that would provide us with more concrete information about when the project will actually be underway and implemented.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. And with this shift, we're moving from policy and financial agreements to then implementation, and that really is now something that will come from Mr. Scott. I'm sure he'll be happy to quarterback that. And for instance, now we're getting into the bracing order, and he will be providing that sort of an update with, of course, my support.
Thank you. I think that would be helpful. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, let's move on to the reports, the committee reports. I'm going to start with the Operations Committee. A virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on March 18th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes have been provided to you in your board packet under item number seven. The Operations Committee is introducing four items on the consent agenda for consideration today, under item number 11, with the committee's recommendation of approval. These items include item number 11A, on the way with ADA, the fixed drought incentive program, which is Resolution 1195; 11B, the contract modification for Union Station Tunnel Rehabilitation Consultant Services, which is Resolution 1196; 11C, which is a single bid contract, the downtown tunnel repairs, Resolution 1197; and 11D, the North Side/South Side MOA, Resolution 1198. In addition, the March Committee meeting, at the March Committee meeting, Talby Roach informed the committee of ongoing contract renewal negotiations with St. Clair County Transit District, and an operations report, including a workforce update, was provided by Charles Stewart, interim Executive Director of Metro Transit. That concludes my report of the Operations Committee. Next committee report is the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee, and I would call on Commissioner Beach to provide the report.
Thank you. A virtual meeting of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee was held on March 18th, immediately following the Operations Committee meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are including your packet under item eight. The AFA Committee is introducing two items for your consideration today with the committee's recommendation of approval. with the committee's recommendation of approval. Item 12 on the agenda, Contract Administration Third Party Oracle Support. That is Resolution 1200. Item 13 on the agenda is the By State Development Fiscal Year 2023 Operating Budget and the Fiscal 2023 to Fiscal Year 2025 Capital Budget, Resolution 1201, including Authorization of Grant Applications, Resolutions 1202 through Resolution 1208. So several informational items were also presented to the committee at the January meeting, including Fiscal Year 2022 External Audit Client Services Plan from Reuben Brown, the Treasurers Report, the Treasury Safekeeping Report dated December 31st of last year, Quarterly Financial Statements, the Procurement Report, Pension Plans, 401K Retirement Savings Program and OPEB Trust Investment Performance Update as of December 31st. And Madam Chair, this concludes my report for the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee Meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Beach. Any questions on that report? Hearing none, we can move to item number nine, which is a report of the Safety and Security Committee. Commissioner Simmons, Simmons, will you please give the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A virtual meeting of the Safety and Security Committee Committee was held on March 10th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the board packet under item number nine. The committee is introducing one item on the consent agenda for consideration today with the committee's recommendation of approval. That item is item 11E License Monitoring Program Resolution 1199. At the March Committee Meeting, an update was also provided by Kevin Scott regarding the Chestnut Healthcare Program. Toby and Darren Curry provided an update regarding the St. Clair County Camera Feeds and Bandwidth. That concludes my report of the Safety and Security Meeting.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the consent agenda?
Yes, I have one. I'll be abstaining from Matters Charlie and Delta C and D.
I'm sorry, what's B and C?
C and D, Charlie and Delta, C and D.
C and D, thank you.
No, no, no.
Myra, is that correct?
Excuse me, that's Charlie and Bravo and Charlie, sorry, B and C. Yeah, I'm abstaining.
Just want to make sure we pulled the the correct ones out.
That's right, B and C, I'm abstaining.
No problem. Because Commissioner Gladney is is abstaining on B and C, we won't have a quorum from the Missouri Board Members to vote on those items. Therefore, I'm going to remove items 11B and 11C from today's consent agenda and they'll be voted on a future Board of Commissioners meeting when a quorum is present. Are no additional adjustments to the consent agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the the consent agenda items, items A, D and E, as referenced in the committee reports and is outlined in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Myra, is this a voice vote?
Yes, it was.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number 12, the Contract Authorization Third Party Oracle Support, Resolution Number 1200. Tom Curran, I think you're going to provide some comments.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. I'm presenting for the Board's approval a request to enter into a contract with Spinnaker Solutions for the provision of technical support for Oracle products and use at By State. Last month, the AFA Committee approved staff to pursue a competitively bid contract for Oracle support that would not exceed $1,625,000 over five years. Proposals were received from three firms, which are listed in your briefing paper. A selection committee consisting of administration, benefits, engineering, finance, IT procurement and talent management staff performed the technical analysis and conducted interviews with each of the three proposing firms. Based on technical and cost scores, Spinnaker Solutions had the highest ranking proposal. Selection of Spinnaker Solutions for Oracle technical support produced an annual savings of $340,000. Management recommends that the Board of Commissioners authorize President and CEO to enter into a one-year contract, including four optional renewal years with Spinnaker Solutions for a five-year total not to exceed amount of $923,070 or $184,614 per year. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hearing none, I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number 13, the By State Development Fiscal Year 2023 Operating Budget and Fiscal 2023 to 2025 Capital Budget, which is Resolution 1202, including the Grant Authorizations Resolution 1202 through through Resolution 1208. And I believe that Tammy Fulbright is going to provide some comments.
I'm happy to answer any questions on the presentation that I presented. Are any?
We had we fully vetted this at the the AFA meeting, Committee Meeting. Does does anyone have any other questions for for Tammy?
I have one. Tammy, with the negotiations going on with St. Clair County, is this going to have any impact on this?
Um, so the negotiations right now, so we have a number plugged in for St. Clair County based on what we put together at the time. I'm not seeing a significant difference in the future, hopefully. But it will make it it will make a line item change there. So we'll have to look at that as we move forward. But I I think we're okay in doing that. We can provide funding if we needed to from other sources to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? May I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, motion carries. Item 14, Law Enforcement Services Agreement with St. Louis County Police Department for Security Services, which is Resolution 1210 in your packet. Kevin Scott, will you provide comments, please?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. So this is a renewal of our overall law enforcement agreement with the St. Louis County Police Department. Our current agreement expires on June 30th of this year. And this is just a new agreement, putting a putting a new agreement in place. One of the things that is different about this agreement is I've requested that they provide a two-term option, the first term for 18 months, which would equate to about a 5% increase over the yearly cost that we pay now. The new rate would be held for 18 months. Would also include a second term beginning January 1 of 2024 that would expire on December 31st of 2024. And the reason why I've asked for this is I'm trying to realign all of the law enforcement contracts where they're on the same time terms. So they all expire at the same time. So that is the that is the difference in this agreement. The resource allocation from the number of staff, officers deployed, vehicles, that is not going to change over the last over the last year. So we just, it was a three-year contract with two extension years and we are in the final phase of the second extension year. And so this overall agreement needs to be renewed with one Phase One being an 18-month term. And Phase Two, there being an option for a Phase Two, which would then align us with the expiration of the City of St. Louis policing contract. And I'm working on the same issue with the St. Clair County Sheriff's Department to see if they would be amenable to the same type of alignment. It would make things much easier from a coordination standpoint, especially as we move through the SPP process and the realization of the reconfiguration of the platforms, how we want to move forward post 2024.
Does this include the exact same number of officers that we have now or more or less or?
Yes, sir, it is. It's the same amount. We didn't made made some increases at the last extension year. We added additional vehicles to their fleet. We also added an internal criminal analyst, which has been hugely impactful for us. The leadership of the task force changed. Captain Lesel Webb got reassigned. Captain Pete Morrow is now overseeing the the county component of the task force. He and I have spent a number of hours together talking about long-term strategy and law enforcement deployment. So we're holding steady on the number of officers at this point.
Kevin, well, is there any kind of a and a contractual obligation or outlet that extends the contract? Should negotiations go beyond the terms of the contract?
What happens?
Yeah, what what happens? You can't.
Sorry, ma'am.
What happens if we can't come to agreement?
The current contract would stay intact until either an agreement was reached or the opting opting out parameters were exercised.
Is it a 30-day opt-out?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Kevin, the 800-pound elephant question in the room. Any movement on the communications project that that's been hanging out there forever?
There has been no official movement from from what I can tell.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Simmons opposed.
Simmons opposed, any abstention? Motion carry. Myra?
Yes, motion carry.
Thank you. Item 15 is unscheduled business.
We have none, Chair.
Item 16 is the Operations Report, which normally Mr. Stewart would give, but he is away for personal reasons. Toby, are you going to provide the Operations Report?
I'm going to do my best, so I would appreciate your patience. This report is prepared very competently by Mr. Stewart and his staff, so I will do my best. I have a few highlights that I want to note. On the first page of the report, you'll note that we are starting to see a robust recovery in MetroLink ridership in a post-COVID circumstance. This does track with what other transit systems are seeing and we're showing essentially a 15% recovery. Other parts of the of the system, and you may note, for instance, Colorado Ride is actually a reduction in FY '22 to '21. This does have to do with the employment crisis and with scheduling of trips. Our employment crisis is most notable in the Colorado Ride staff. And of course, we're working on this that quite rigorously. And there are some numbers that I'll refer to shortly to to note that. I will note also that we are running favorable to budget, which is not unusual at this time. However, the way our finances do work, we do tend in the last quarter of a of a typical budget, have a lot of expenses that that hit. So I do expect us to, of course, make budget, but not at a reduction that is shown on the 14%. Specifically, moving into Colorado Ride Passenger Trip Requests, this, of course, is the area where we we need the most improvement, mostly in van availability, which is mostly having to do with the employment crisis. And as we move into where we are on staffing on the on the last page, you'll see that those efforts have have increased. Talking about fixed route ridership, we did see, although in the beginning of February, you may recall, there were some significant ice storms and problems with with that 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 affected ridership recovery there. But even despite this, there was a 23% increase in MetroLink boardings and an 11% increase in MetroBus compared to in Illinois MetroBus compared to 2021. So there is shades of a pretty significant ridership recovery, but we need to continue to to move forward on things as as much as possible. There is a workforce update, specific sheet that was requested by the board. That is the final sheet on this. It has a green banner at the top and it is within your packet. I will note, we had 202 new hires since the sign-on bonus program began in 2021. That $2,000 bonus program has has gotten us quite a few positives. However, if you go down to the staffing levels at the bottom, you can still see where our worst issues are right now, specifically for Colorado Ride operators, where we are roughly still 26% below what our ideal level would be on MetroBus. We're still 16%. MetroLink is not as bad with right around 7%. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say that we have had some progress with these hiring incentives. However, with the tightening of this market, we are still seeing some bleed of our of our current employees. We are losing employees to other employers, particularly to utility companies and, of course, some to retirement. One of the biggest things that we are trying to do is increase our recruiting pool. Fundamentally, if we're seeing an average worker who used to work with us, let's say, from it used to be 10 years, but now the average work with us is seven years, then essentially we need more employees coming in the front door. So we need to move these recruiting efforts up. And we have been doing that. And it is noted in the recruiting progress that we had events on April the 14th, the 25th, the 26th, the 27th and 29th at not only at at high schools, but also in conjunction with the Urban League. We are going to continue to do these events, both in Missouri and Illinois. And we continue to recruit what are very nice and important jobs that you can work and can read your community and live in your community and raise your families. So let's see, just want to check my notes. And that that concludes the Operations Report. I'm happy to take any questions the best I can.
Madam Chair, I have a question, if I may ask. Thank you. Director Roach, are you working with community colleges and maybe even high schools to try to grow your own workforce? Those are methods that are being employed in many other areas and some are realizing success.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner, we are reaching out to high schools and also we are pushing forward on some transit training programs through the community college systems, both in Missouri and Illinois. In in Missouri in particular, we've asked for some specific transit funding with our partnership with MPTA to fund essentially a transit training type unit course within the community college system. There is a similar one in Illinois and I need to check up on. That's a great suggestion and Southwestern Illinois College is a is a great partner and and I can talk to staff about pursuing that as well. I think those are great ideas.
Great, thank you.
I I had one quick question, Toby. It follows up on Commissioner Moore's, which is I see on the workforce update that you did recruitment at several high schools. But I'm wondering whether or not there's any kind of of effort at By State that at ByState that is internship mentoring, anything like that for potential operators? And also, what is the minimum age to be a bus driver?
So we do actually recruit at 18, even though 18 is not qualified for a Missouri CDL. But since that's a really good availability, we get a lot of good workers in that group. So we will often recruit at 18 and 19-year-olds and put them, and place them in jobs, which then they can be mentored and moved up, for instance, in bus cleaning or fundamental maintenance. For instance, in the changing of tires and maintenance area. There's all kinds of work that can be done around Metro Transit, and so we have been moving forward on more appropriate mentoring programs. That also is the basis of some of these efforts with the community colleges to essentially pay employees to go through the CDL-type training. It has always been a debate, for instance, you bring this point up, whether a CDL, specifically in Missouri, can be gained by an 18-year-old. I would support that change in the licensure. I think it would be, it'd just leave us more availability for employees, needed employees. These are good jobs, but we do need to pursue that through the state of both Missouri and Illinois.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have a quick one. Talby, for clarification, I didn't see it in the report. Maybe I might have missed it. So is there a way to break out the MetroLink increase in ridership that's not attributable to, you know, baseball games, for example? Because I think that one of the things, I saw that it showed that the FY '22, I think, was up 15% over '21. Well, '21, there wasn't, I think there were a lot of restrictions and fan restrictions, not as many people went to the games. And as everyone knows, you know, those games, those big events, there's some of the times that MetroLink gets as heavy as ridership, and that's great. But I'm just wondering if we have a sense of if the actual, you know, folks taking it to work, that sort of stuff, that ridership is picking up as well, or if some of the bumper, the 15% bumper state might be more attributable to sporting events, which are great, but isn't, you know, we're not getting some of our riders back, perhaps? So I was wondering if you had any thoughts on that?
So normally, what we note on, and these are interesting effects, we do note special event days, you know, just note them, for instance, how many game days we have, and you can see that effect. The other effect that is actually discernible, noticeable, that also has to do with weather events. Weather events, when it is very, very cold or very hot, it does have an effect on our fundamental ridership, and that is day-to-day ridership. On the other hand, special event ridership, especially with the Cardinal games, typically, those are riders who are using really our highest-cost fare. So they tend to be the most lucrative from a ridership standpoint. And for instance, for moving our, and you may have noticed that our cost per passenger went down significantly associated with special event riders. So these are very interesting subjects to take a look at. Yeah, we do have reams of data that you can take a look at and look at actually even a daily basis on how that works. We do try to compile them so that you see where the trend goes. And I'll try to take a look at some of those and pull them out, so you can take a look at them and see what that general effect is. I would call, for instance, special events, the icing on our cake, okay? It is not the cake. The everyday, five-day-a-week rider is really, that's our fundamental, important ridership. That's really what drives the end numbers. But of course, everybody likes the icing as well. It's great to get those Cardinal. I cannot tell you how downtown feels differently already with having the fans here. It is a discernible and noticeable difference all the way from the sidewalk to MetroLink. Let me tell you, I welcome them. I'll try to do, I'll try to talk to staff about separating those out at your next report, so you can see what the effect is.
You don't, I don't think that's necessary. I'm not trying to create extra work, you guys. I just wanted to get a sense of if you thought we were getting back some of the non-special event riders, which is basically all I wanted to know. I trust you guys to, in turn, to, you know, work with your own data and do it. I'm not trying to create more work. I just wanted to know if you thought we were getting back some of the non-special event folks, too.
I would say yes, although you can also see the trend is incremental. It's over a period of time, and we need to look at that within that context and also look at the pieces of revenue. I will say that one of the tracking pieces that I'd really like to equate to is the effect of gas prices with our ridership. I'm the only one in St. Louis who's excited about $4 a gallon gas, but I am excited about it. That will and does tend to drive our gas prices. I believe the last spike we had was in, I'm sorry, 2015 or so, and we saw a discernible effect that arrived on the system about 30 to 60 days afterwards. So I do expect us to start seeing those spikes as weather improves, really, now and in the next month or two.
Thanks, Talby. That concludes the President's Report, so I would call for dates for future meetings.
Miss Chair, I would like to note that we'll be reaching out to the Board this afternoon to reschedule a special meeting to address those items that were postponed earlier this meeting. In addition, the next Security Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, May 5 at 8:30. The next Operations Committee meeting, as well as the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting will be held on June 10, beginning at 8:30. The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, June 24, also beginning at 8:30.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn to the Executive Session. I need a motion that the Board go into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under ByState Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080D1 Legal and D11 Security.
More votes? More seconds?
Thank you. We have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Validay?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. See you all in a few minutes. The Board has reconvened to open session. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioners Executive Session as a closed record?
More votes?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Validay?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Executive Session Consent Agenda Items? Item A, 20 to 22, 20 to 20, 2022 to 2025 EEOAA Programs Submission, which is Resolution Number 1209?
Madam Chair, I still move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Validay?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all. If there's no further business, I would request a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. See you soon.
All right.